This is a special meeting for Villanova University for a preliminary plan for the construction of 1,135-bed student housing in six buildings with associated retail space under the CICD use with phase-in construction. Is the applicant here and ready?
So last week, we submitted some additional material, and we were going to take a few minutes to go through that to familiarize yourselves with it, because I'm sure you haven't had a chance to look at it. And I also wanted to address some questions from the last meeting.
Just, well, do you want to, one of these, or you want to just angle it more towards you?
I'll use this. So we wanted to address some questions we had last time related to the church and the church ownership. So on the, on the screen, you can see the yellow, so get you oriented, this is Lancaster Avenue. It's the R5 Railroad. And the yellow indicates Villanova-owned land. This is one of many parcels.
Eithon Avenue is, yes, okay, thanks.
Right. So this is one of many parcels, not the only land we owned. And this little hole is the monastery. So this is taken from the Delaware County publicly-available parcel maps. And then this is a separate parcel that's owned by the Augustinian Order. And this is the monastery. It does not include the church, right? And I know it's hard to see and tell from this, but, but this was all submitted as part of the land development submission, and I'm sure the township engineer can verify that it's, that just the monastery is the only part that's not owned by the university. There are also questions about, was this land included in the calculations for pervious, impervious coverage? And actually, all the land was. So that's a conservative, you know, calculation by us.
So you included the monastery, which is technically not owned by the university. So you kind of over-included some impervious coverage?
Yeah, the monastery is almost all impervious and almost all building, you know, for the land.
Just approximately, how much of surrounding land around the monastery, probably how many feet?
About an acre.
It's about an acre?
It's about 1.14, 1.4. So I have it too.
1.432.
1.4, yeah.
And there, there's a small, there's a small band of grass on two sides of the building. The other two ends are connected to structures.
Okay, thanks.
Can we switch back to this graphic? Okay. Can we switch back to the overhead, please? The other questions involved the parking and where will folks park for church when they attend church? So basically, thank you. Basically, the answer is where they park today, except that we're flip-flopping from the east to the west. So today, this is all surface parking on the east. That will go away, and we'll have surface parking on the other side. So today, we ask preshews who are able to park in the visitor lot and in the larger lot for bigger events, larger weddings and funerals. And anyone with different abilities welcome to park on main campus. And if it's a Saturday or Sunday, we have extensive parking here, here, we have the garage. So basically, the answer to where, where will people going to church park is the same place they'd park today, except that we're flip-flopping the large lot from the east side to the west side of the church walk. And then for access to the church, whereas before, they had three sets of stairs to ascend, today, they'll be able to either go up a ramp and up and over the bridge, or go up one of two sets of stairs and over the bridge. So I'm going to ask our fabulous team to talk a little about the additional submissions that we just made on Friday.
Thanks.
All right. I'm John Cluver, one of the architects for the project. One of the requests that came from the last meeting we had was updates on elevations and perspectives and views of, of the project. And the reality is that it, it hasn't changed in any substantial way from the submission that we had before. So if we just quick flip through, this is what was included in the conditional use application, and the intent is very much for it to look like this. We're working on updated.
They've got to change it.
No. It looked great on my laptop. So the, the development still looks very much like this, and we'll be providing additional information for the design review committee as we move forward with that part as well. So the overall view of the housing development, the view from Lancaster Avenue and Eithon Avenue. It's worth noting here, this was also discussed to a certain extent during the conditional use application about the mechanical units being rooftop-mounted and how they're being screened by the roof and parapets at this location as well. Interior view of the courtyard showing the general quality of construction.
And John, one other thing, that picture, of course, didn't have the fence. So before someone mentions it didn't have the fence in there, the previous picture, remember, those could be fenced in, you know, so that, you know, for people to cross Lancaster.
So this rendering showing the general quality, stone, faux-slate roof, metal windows, general collegiate Gothic. The bridge, I do have an updated drawing of the bridge to show in a couple of minutes, but the basic intent of a masonry-clad bridge going over Lancaster Avenue with a gentle curve to it connecting from the SEPTA overpass over to the church is still, still the same concept. Rendering of the Performing Arts Center, again, the general concept is still, still the same. This was a view from Lancaster Avenue going west. This is a view from the main portion of the Villanova campus, looking across Lancaster and Eithon. With, you can see the parking structure in the background there. This is a close-up view of that, of the parking structure, you know, with a solid corner where the stairs and elevators would be located. The primary vertical circulation for the garage located directly adjacent to the Performing Arts Center. This is Eithon Avenue here. This was also a view that was shown during the conditional use application, showing the view from the Barley Cone area on the far east side of the Villanova property with the Performing Arts Center on the right and the parking structure on the left. This next set are elevations of many of those same views, again, showing the general character of the development. These are all from the conditional use application. You can see here, you know, it's a residential scale for stories, you know, residential scaled windows. We do have a storefront system along the Lancaster Avenue side where the retail will be going. You can see the combination of roofs and parapets giving some variety to the roofline so that it doesn't have a very monotonous feel to it. It really breaks down the scale to a, to a very pedestrian scale. View along Eithon Avenue here. This is showing in particular, in the dash line, the location of the service yard along Eithon. So it's showing how that's a depressed element, so it won't have these elements visible from, to the public from Eithon Avenue. The parking structure, this one element has changed in particular. You can see here, this was a very consistent rhythm with vertical elements providing a screening and also providing the fresh air. That has now been updated, something more consistent with this, where we have a more regular, a more refined rhythm in the facade, where you have major bays and then minor bay articulation that really helps take away a sense of a monotonous facade. And then a couple renderings of the Performing Arts Center in elevation. So again, those were all part of the conditional use discussion. For the bridge itself, this is the most recent information we have on the bridge. And you can see the general concept is the same. When you look at the elevation on the top, and I'm going to zoom in a little bit, and I'll work you from south to, south to north. This section right over here is the SEPTA Route 100 tracks. So this is the existing SEPTA overpass, which we will be retaining. We'll be connecting to that with a, with a bridge structure. Then on this Villanova property, there's a, what we call the pavilion right here, which is an open structure underneath, but it provides the location for an access ramp and for the stairs. One thing that we do want to point out, there's a, a very major change from the conditional use discussion is during conditional use, the ramp was shown on the west side here. We flipped it over to the east side to allow us to provide buffer planting in this area of SEPTA parking here, where it backs up to the residential properties that are immediately adjacent. From this pavilion with the stair and ramp access, it is a relatively level, and I say relatively because there's a minor slope for drainage purposes, a relatively level open structure going across the Villanova property from the tracks to Lancaster Avenue with occasional stone piers. As we get over to Lancaster Avenue, we have, becoming a more solid masonry structure, very in keeping with the, the look of a masonry piece spanning a major highway. The span is about 78 feet. The clearance underneath at the curb line is 18-foot. The PennDOT requirements now are 17-foot-six. We provide a couple extra inches for some construction and other tolerances in there. The walkway is relatively level coming across. It's about 22 and 1/2 feet above the road level. And then we have a combination parapet and rail. Let me see if I can zoom in a little more on that. Combination parapet and open railing at the top here that creates a barrier on the whole that's six feet high, but it's not solid stone for that full six feet. Back on the north side of Lancaster Avenue, we start the slope back down so that we can meet grade. We are going to be changing the grade in the area immediately around the walkway to build up somewhat. And then the bridge comes down to meet it, so that the grade eventually becomes, even with the existing church plaza landing, we'll be expanding the plaza a little bit to make it a more ceremonial location. So you can see that bridge just flows right into the church plaza, and then you, the only steps you have there are the, the half-flight immediately in front of the church. So the whole idea with the, with the bridge is that once, especially for students coming from south campus, once they're up on top of this, the Route 100 overpass, they're basically walking on a level surface, some minor variations up and down. For people who are parking in the visitor lot here or coming from the housing, they have one flight of steps to come up here or here, or the, the ramp if necessary. And once you're up, you're coming across the campus and landing at the, at the main campus level. So we've eliminated from that visitor lot, there was the half-flight down, and then you cross the street, and then you have to go up a series of steps, up, up, up. So it's been all consolidated into, into the one location for the steps.
Could you slide that back and just show us where the handicap ramp starts?
The handicap ramp to the bridge is located behind the housing on the south side, running parallel with the tracks.
And where does it start on the ground?
It starts right at the entrance, right at this pavilion space here. All the entrances are occurring actually under the pavilion.
So that's the second level?
What we're showing on this plan is the elevated level. If we were to slice through it, let's say like three feet off the ground, what you would see is an open structure underneath with sort of corner piers, but it's a series of arches, one on each side that is blocked here.
Where does the person cross the street and start to walk, to roll up the ramp?
You can cross at this crosswalk right here.
And where do you enter the ramp?
And then you enter the ramp under this.
Oh, under there?
There's an archway under this walkway. So you'd come under there and then through an archway here to get to this ramp. In addition, there is a, because this ramp is high enough, you can go directly under that upper section of the ramp.
I understand, yeah, thanks.
And that's also how you would get to the SEPTA platform underneath you and see the connection right in this location. So the, there was also a discussion of buffering, and I'm going to call up the overall site plan again to talk a little bit more about the buffering.
Can I just ask a quick question on the bridge before you leave that? What is the width of the bridge?
The width is 10-foot clear on the inside.
Okay.
The outside dimensions are about 14-foot-six to account for the structure and cladding.
And how high are the railings on the side?
From the walking surface to the top, most railing's six-foot.
Okay, thank you.
All the way, all the way along the span of Lancaster Avenue, where we have, once we've gotten past Lancaster Avenue and are on the, back on the Villanova property, you see that the height changes and drops down to more of a guardrail, 42-inch or 48-inch high wall. So you can see there's a change here to here. And then along this, what we call the secondary span connecting across here, that's also at a guard, at more traditional guardrail height, and it's a more open railing. Are there any other questions for the bridge?
You, you know, it's not your responsibility to put an accessible ramp on the other side, right? That's SEPTA's property, that's their problem. Is that right?
It is, it is part of SEPTA's bridge there. I mean, it's something that I know you've had discussions, Bob.
Yeah, we're, we're working with SEPTA, and they have in their long-range capital plan to make the other half handicap accessible. So they are working on that. I don't have a year, but it is in their long-range plan.
It's probably more like a decade, but we, thank you.
One question. On the side where you've already crossed over from SEPTA over Lancaster Avenue, is there any potential for connecting back into that sidewalk in a different way than, it's really, people are going underneath only, right?
You're.
So there's no way to enter the campus?
On the north side?
What's, what's the first entry point if you're heading north on that side?
Let me go to the overall site plan. Because one of the conditions that we were given as part of the, the conditional use approval was to discourage at-grade crossing of Lancaster Avenue, we have a fence that goes continuously across so that, you know, the, the access is very limited. There was discussion, there's currently a stone wall at this location here, the access drive, just north of church, church walk. That's open. We were talking about putting a, a gate in there to restrict pedestrian access. If ultimately it was decided it was preferable to have some level of pedestrian access, that would be a logical location to maintain a degree of openness, partly because it is now a good distance from the crosswalk location. If you recall from the last meeting, we discussed how previously the crosswalk and the new entrance drive was located directly adjacent to the bridge, but based on conversations with the township and with PennDOT, this entrance drive moved south, as did the crosswalk and the crossing lights, which makes this a greater distance, which could discourage people from using it should that be left open.
Do you happen to know if a SEPTA bus stops along there? Is there a stop there anywhere?
There is a SEPTA stop at church walk currently.
At church walk?
Yes.
Okay. And so if people are coming off the campus and they want to get to that bus?
They could.
How would they do that?
Well, depending which way they wanted to go, but they could come across the bridge and then down the steps and then cross the crosswalk at the light if they needed to get to the north side. The SEPTA stop would, in all likelihood, shift that, I don't know the exact distance, 100 or so feet to the south. So one way or another, whether they were to come down the campus, you know, on this side and come over, they're going to end up at the same point, which is right near that crosswalk.
And how about going in the other direction? Where's the bus?
The bus stop, I would anticipate, would be.
Would be opposite.
Here, or maybe on the lead, probably on the, on the far corner, you know, west of the intersection, since there is a turn lane here, I suspect SEPTA would want to have the bus come past the intersection, but I'm speaking for them at this point.
I'm just wondering how practical it is to have somebody cross Lancaster Avenue and then walk down and then go back across Lancaster Avenue again to get to the bus? I don't know how many people get that bus. Maybe you know, maybe there's so few, it doesn't matter.
We do have information.
Please, do it for yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris Kowalski from Villanova. Our traffic engineer did query SEPTA about that very issue, and the ridership is low at that stop. It is roughly one an hour. So it, it isn't high.
So on the north side of Lancaster Avenue, west of the bridge, is there any change in the access along there, or is that an existing fence to remain that entire length? Or is it extended?
Currently, currently, along that entire length, there's a hedge line that has a gap in the hedge, that there's a little footpath right here, but otherwise, it's a solid row of hedges. We were proposing putting new metal fencing behind the hedge and continuing it all the way down until we get to the edge of the Villanova property.
Is this to meet your requirements, or is it something you prefer to have?
This was done in, in response to the township requirements.
Remember, there was concern about pedestrians and students crossing, and one of the, and it may have been part of the conditional use process that they required us to put fencing all along there so that the students wouldn't cross.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, safety obviously has to be the top priority, but I just, I don't want to see something go in and then after the fact, look at it and say, you know, we've really closed ourselves in and made something that's unappealing. But, I mean, I understand where you are. You're, you're meeting your conditions. If, if the condition wasn't there, would you want it anyway, the fence? Or would you feel like that hedge is sufficient?
We haven't discussed it as a group personally. I would not think that that fence was accomplishing much. It's a, it's a relatively dense hedge, and it's also up a bit of an incline.
There's an incline behind it, right?
An incline between this, on the street side of the hedge.
Yeah, in between.
So you have to climb up and then cut through.
Yeah, it seems to me like it, it kind of met the needs.
I haven't seen any paths of desire through that, through those hedges, maybe one in one location.
It's, as I understand it correctly, from the corner of South Eithon Avenue and Lancaster Avenue, all the way along the south side of Lancaster, you're going to have a fence all the way down to that bridge. Is that correct?
Correct. We're, we're going to start a fence roughly at this location here, just past the intersection, and it will continue uninterrupted all the way down to the bridge, actually connecting to the bridge structure. The walkway, the sidewalk is being moved off of Lancaster Avenue and is being put on the Villanova side. So this is a route that the public can use. You then go under a pedestrian archway under the bridge, and then it comes back to resume with Lancaster Avenue. There are going to be some gates provided in this fence for Radnor emergency personnel use, some, both a sliding, a larger sliding gate over here by the, by the, by the bridge to allow emergency vehicle entrance if they're coming from the Wayne area, and then back out over by Eithon, or vice versa, if they're coming from Bryn Mawr. And then if they need to stage in Lancaster Avenue, there are a series of six-foot-wide gates that would be controlled by, you know, like Knox Box or something like that to limit use to either Villanova personnel or emergency personnel.
But absent, absent emergency personnel or Villanova need, there will be a continuous blockade the entire length.
Correct.
And the purpose of that is to, is to prevent the students from even getting.
It's basically to continue the condition that they have today, which is a continuous fence on, you know, along any, I'll call it mid-span crossing of Lancaster Avenue, you know, off of the lights.
Is that going to continue on the other side of the bridge? Both sides of the road, or just on the north side?
Once we get past this intersection here, we're resuming the existing condition, which is no fence.
Just a general note that just may be of some interest. When walking around campus, you know the, on the north side of Lancaster Avenue there, there's the access for funerals and weddings, that, the road that's there?
Correct.
I walk up in the campus regularly, and I avoid that road because it's at a pitch, enough of an angle, that when you try and come to the sidewalk, you're coming at, at enough that you're, it's propelling you forward, whether you're walking, you're, you have children on bikes, whatever. So as a community member, walking down there, you're coming right out onto Lancaster. I mean, literally, right out on Lancaster. So it's dangerous. You don't really want to come out there because traffic coming, you can watch the car if they, as you make eye contact with them, how they, they swerve because they think that you're going to continue out. So I personally support that being closed off because I don't think it's a safe, especially if someone's jogging. I mean, there's just no reaction time for traffic. So it's, I think, yes, it's great to be able to open it up, but having tried to use it before, I really discourage not being able to use it.
One of the other questions that came up previously was about site buffering. And when you look at this rendered plan, which has added the trees that are shown on all the land development submissions, or just added color to them, it's a lot of trees, so the match might not be 100%, but the intent was there. But what you see are these darker circles indicating areas of new buffer planting to create the, the buffer screening along the new parking lot here. When we're doing the buffer planting, the species are being very carefully considered in response to the existing trees which are being retained, to make sure we've got things that can grow and have a chance of survival. The buffer planning is, consists of several different species that are listed on the land development submission as well. So you'll see the buffer plan continuing all along the trail, the tracks here, continuing alongside the ramp to the bridge, and then continuing all along the backside of the housing development as well.
And with those, are you going with mostly native?
Yes, they're all approved species, reviewed both by Villanova and by the township. Shade Tree Commission has already taken a look at the housing portion of the project and given it its blessing. We are also had discussions in the past about the buffer along the Barley Cone area, and currently, there is a buffer line. There, there's a berm with buffer planting on it. And what's happened is, over the years, a couple of the, the buffer plantings have been lost for one reason or another. And while it's not specifically indicated on any of these land development plans because it's outside the specific project areas, my understanding is the, the willingness of Villanova to infill those buffer plantings where it's desired by the particular resident who lives immediately behind those areas. There, there was a request for sections, buffer sections. And, give me a second here. You'll find in the new land development submission that several sections have been provided now, showing a typical, a couple typical conditions. One, the one on the top is closer to the bridge location. The one on the bottom is closer to the Eithon Avenue location, where you can see the Route 100 tracks here are more elevated relative to the rest of the site. But it shows the general character of the, of the buffer planting and the, some of the typical species. So that, that information has been provided now as well.
I'm sorry. When you say provided, we have this packet for the April meeting. Is it in there as well as some new document set that came in on Friday?
The document set that came in on Friday is what we're looking at right now. So it has answered that request.
Okay.
It had always shown in plan view, we just added the sections. Are there any other questions relative to the, to the buffer?
So are you going pretty much point by point by a comment from our staff?
These were, these were several comments that we wanted specifically to address.
Specifically, okay, good.
I was actually done, and the civil engineer was going to address a couple more comments as well.
Of the general nature or specific, or?
Of a couple of the specific items, stormwater, and I don't remember what else was on your list, Alex.
Well, I guess the question is, would you like me to, to go point by point through what we responded to on Friday?
I really, most interested, I mean, if you and our staff are in agreement with items, and if you're going to, if they're will comply items, or you're going to make, you know, just if they're will comply items, that's fine. But I don't need, we don't need to hear those, but we do need to hear ones where you take some exception, or you're looking at variance, or some, you know, some modification.
Yeah. Similar to what John went through, I was going to give a general overview of the changes between the plans that you have from the previous submission and what was reflected in the updates that you received on Friday, which is a response to the comment letters that exist. Most notably, that's the inclusion of the right turn lane at the Performing Arts Center, which we talked about the last time we were here, and also the relocation of the church walk.
Excuse me, is there, do we need to point to that, or?
Yeah, let me.
Do we need to get off, or are you going to go to the computer?
Yeah, we have it digitally here. And when we were here previously, for the shorter version of the meeting, we, we did speak to some of these modifications already, but they have been included in the formal re-submission documents. So the one major change. So the one major change is, as you can see here, there's the existing widening that we had are always shown, the 56-foot cross-section for the intersection with the, the two westbound lanes, the two eastbound lanes, and the center left turn lane here. After you get just past the intersection, you'll now see that there's a 50-foot taper and 100-foot right turn lane that's now provided here. And as we discussed previously, this allows the opportunity for event traffic to be circulated behind the Performing Arts Center, use the additional stacking queue of this rear lane for additional vehicle storage, and get people in, directly into the garage without having to make a right at Eithen, then make another left into the other entry point down here. And the other benefit of this location, which is really why PennDOT liked it and actually supports it for two reasons. One, it gives a relief point. If the garage were to be full, then you can open up the gate at the end of this service drive, and the police can send people back out this way, turn right and up onto campus, or back over to 320 up to Law School Garage. If the event traffic's coming down this road and the garage is full, there's nowhere to turn around. So this location was beneficial from a circulation standpoint in that it provided this extra relief point to recirculate any overflow vehicles. Plus, the storage is now on private property behind the Performing Arts Center instead of people queuing on Eithen waiting to turn left into the garage. The other benefit, and this was, you know, the bulk of the discussion during the land develop, or the conditional use hearing, it allows the opportunity for this crosswalk to stay at a length that allows us to maintain the existing pedestrian crossing time and not have to lengthen that crossing time, which would hurt the efficiency of the, the efficiency of the signal design in this intersection. So for those two reasons, PennDOT supports this location in lieu of the right turn lane at Eithen. So...
Mr. Chairman, if I could add, I mean, Mr. Tweedy, I don't disagree that we did meet with PennDOT on this, and the township met with PennDOT subsequent to this. And I believe they asked the applicant, before they make a final decision, to provide some modeling on how that's all going to work when the time comes. And there is going to be another meeting with PennDOT once again. So that's still somewhat up in the air. I'm not saying that won't be the final version, but we are still looking at other things with PennDOT, whether it be the right-hand turn lane or not. So it's not a fait accompli at this point. It's still out there for review.
Thanks.
Steve, have you considered having this current configuration with an additional right turn lane as well at, at Eithen? Because to me, that seems like the ideal scenario. Regardless of the fact that you lose a few seconds on the crosswalk, you'd have that dedicated right turn lane. And I'm sure if Radnor Township was supportive of that, PennDOT would allow that.
I, I agree 100% with you. And that, that's one of the suggestions we made.
And then when you come down here, down to the bottom there, you could always turn right into the parking area if there was an issue, couldn't you? That's a two-way opening, right? On, on the...
Correct, behind the housing is a two-way repurposed.
Yes, so if you came down and the parking garage were closed, you could always make a right.
You could be directed behind the dorms, the opposite direction.
Yeah, so for me, that's what I'd prefer to see, is a right turn lane in addition to what you see here today.
Although, I believe during event planning that that coming behind the housing would actually be only one way into the garage.
Well, yeah.
To take people off Lancaster Avenue and get them on campus and in the garage.
Right, I think what Nick's saying, the difficulty with sending people to recirculate this way is, the other version of the event plan was to allow people to turn right in a church walk, get off the road, and...
Is there not enough room for two-way traffic in there, or?
There is, but there was a question as to whether or not they would want to shut it down and do two lanes of one way to feed the garage. It goes down to the event plan.
I see what you're saying. Well, in the, in the everyday condition, I'd prefer to have that right turn lane on Eithen. Non-event conditions, I think it would be more helpful for the Route 30 traffic. But with modeling, you can check that.
And, and obviously, it's not a done issue yet. And obviously, the concern is if we do have that right turn lane, as Alex had mentioned, that if the parking garage is full, we have no place to send them except down Eithen, South Eithen Avenue, which is what we don't want to do. We want to redirect them back on the campus.
You're going to do traffic modeling, so isn't that going to provide us some answers as to how effective that is?
I defer to the traffic engineer for what, why he is or is not providing to PennDOT.
Yes.
I'm not sure of the specific request.
PennDOT has requested that they do some studies with some traffic counts that they obtained during a basketball event. And it's to look at the queues and see how these operations are going to work. And it's going to be taking into consideration the special event plans that they have prepared and to determine whether or not PennDOT feels that that right turn lane is needed on Lancaster leading to Eithen. One of the things that we also discussed is during the special event plans, there would be no left into the parking garage on southbound Eithen. So, and what we would eventually like to be able to do is close off that right turn lane to gain access to Eithen during special events. So if you wanted to get into the parking garage, you would have to go through the intersection and then make a right in that D cell lane to get into the garage. And then once the garage fills, then you would recirculate back up Eithen and head towards campus where there's other parking areas available.
And during non-events, do we need that right turn lane on Eithen? Then, normal?
Which one, the one, on Eithen?
Right, on Eithen.
On Lancaster leading to Eithen.
So it's, this is, this is probably only needed for events? Is that what the assumption is?
The right turn lane?
Correct.
That's what we're going to be looking at to determine whether or not?
But we don't, but we, so do we think it might be needed?
We don't know at this point because the traffic impact study was not analyzed to eliminate any of the lefts going through the intersection and entering the garage further. So when we made the statement that it is warranted, meaning that it meets the criteria where PennDOT typically requires a right turn lane, now that they have introduced that right turn lane into the parking garage beyond the intersection, that's going to alter how those traffic movements occur at the intersection. So we need to see more information before we can make a definite answer on that.
So we're going to need to kind of, pretty much table this discussion until we get to the point of getting that traffic study done and, and the meeting with PennDOT. Other than that, it's all speculation.
Yes, and, and the other thing to remember is that that particular improvement is going to be occurring during Phase Three? Two? During Phase Two?
Which improvement, the traffic? Well, yeah, it would be the early part of Phase Two. The only thing that's been built, built before that is the West Lancaster parking and the SAC garage expansion, just so that replaces the parking that gets lost when Pike Lot and the, that intersection gets improved.
I have a quick question. When you and PennDOT look at the right turn at Eithen, in addition to the right turn and past the intersection of Eithen, do they consider the angle at which you're turning on to the road and the, in, the necessity of decreasing your speed further because of the way you're turning? In other words, you can't, you really have to slow down to make that turn because of the degree that you're turning?
Right, you also have to remember that Lancaster Avenue is 25 miles per hour, so we're not starting at a 45 mile per hour. And there's criteria for setting up tapers leading into full width widening, which is what they would be doing for that turn lane. And then they're required to provide what we call truck turning, or turning templates to allow us to see how those movements would occur during traffic operations. So yes, those things would be looked at.
Okay.
And just one more thing to note on this, which I think Frank has mentioned in at least the conditional use hearings. The other item to note with the day-to-day traffic circulation at this intersection is the parking in this general area is reduced from the current condition, which you have to remember. Currently, you could access both the 1,100-car parking lot and the 577-car parking lot from this turning movement. After this development happens, the parking in this area is going to be reduced. There's only going to be about 700 active parking spots, or 600, 700 in the garage, with the top two floors being warehouse cars for the residents of the dorms. So the destination traffic to parking in this area is much different than the current condition, which will be reflected in the updated models.
Okay, great.
As far as, we can go through the review letters first, and then some of them will lead into, I guess, some of the changes we made that we wanted to highlight. As far as the review letter, we believe most of those are will complies. There was a comment about the church access at the existing driveway, which we already, already discussed. So that's one item that we were still discussing with staff, but I think we've presented that issue. As far as Roger's letter from Gena Fleming is concerned, there was a question on the breakdown of impervious coverage with the monastery. We, we already addressed that. It was included to be conservative. If it were taken out, like we said, it's basically shrink-wrapping the monastery. So that's a high impervious area. So if we took it out, it would, it's, it's a conservative approach. The one area, Gena Fleming's comment number nine, under the zoning provision, we've discussed with Roger as well, with that comment about on the north side of the railroad, it doesn't have a full 20-foot buffer width for that entire length. Actually, we're on the computer right. So the comment is, along this portion of the roadway, or the property, there's portions where the parking up in this area is closer than 20 feet to the right-of-way line. Though we are providing buffer planting material in there, it's not a 20-foot wide area. Our response letter and our position on this is that it's not adjacent to residential land, and it's adjacent to PI zone land that's still owned by the applicant. And it's expressly spelled out in the CICD ordinance that you don't have to buffer from lands of yourself, similar to zone land. So we disagree that a 20-foot buffer is required on, on this portion. We are supplementing trees to provide additional screening. It's just not at the 20-foot width. Comment 11, there's a comment about a reserved parking agreement. We don't believe that applies as well because we've, we're providing the code-required parking. That only applies if you're, if you have a deficit of parking and you're asking for a reduction in parking, and then you add additional reserved parking.
I have a question on that one there, if I can interrupt you.
Sure.
It says, within five years of occupancy. Is that five years after the entire build-out? Or, in other words, does that change as the build-outs go along there?
My understanding of the way that's written is, if you build less and you get a reserved parking plan approved, and then within five years they need more, they can make you build your reserved parking. But we...
That, that comment was generated...
Is that your interpretation? What he just said, is that your interpretation?
I didn't quite hear what he said, but that, what, what drove that comment to be put in my letter is, initially, we didn't have what I considered to be a detailed enough parking breakdown of where all the spots were. And this was going back to the original plan that was submitted over a month ago. Supplemented to that submission, they've given me breakdowns in the parking, both what the future parking will be and what the parking will be during the construction with the different phases, which satisfies us. So they satisfied me to the point that they're providing sufficient parking per code, so this provision then goes away. If they were not providing sufficient parking per code, you have the ability to enter into an agreement with them where they have to upgrade their parking if it's determined to be a problem when you monitor it for five years. This really doesn't apply now since we've got the sufficient parking provided and the details and the, and the, the calculations have been provided, and they're acceptable.
My, my concern is, one, I had asked, when does that go into effect? After all phases are built, or after each one? In other words, is it a step-type of thing? And if what you say, they pull it off because you don't need their additional requirement, I then have another comment, which is, once the theater starts being used, I think you're going to need perhaps more parking than what you're requiring there. Maybe you need to consider moving the warehouse, so-called warehouse cars, to another part of the campus if they aren't going to be moved that much, which is what you had said all along, they're not going to be moved that much, they're just going to sit up there. And allow that parking to remain open for the usage of the theater. So I guess that's a question to Villanova.
Well, the...
Have you considered options like that for down the road? Because I'm sure when you build a theater like this, it's going to be used a fair amount and rent it out. And I'm just wondering if you have sufficient parking there. And it seems like you should have parking close to the theater, especially if you're renting it out so people aren't wandering around the campus trying to figure out where to park.
Well, the, the largest seat theater in the Performing Arts Center is 400 seats, and there's 700 cars in the garage available, so that should be... And the requirement for the Performing Arts Center isn't one for every seat. It's one for every three seats. So the availability in those levels of the garage is more than adequate for the code requirement for the parking. And even if you assume every seat has their own car, it's still almost twice as much parking is, would be available.
How many different theaters are you in the Performing Arts Center? You say there's one, it's the largest one's 400, are there smaller ones?
I might have to defer to John on this one. There's a 400-seat main theater, a 250-seat black box theater? 200 black box theater. And then there's classroom space that have, just one classroom.
650, that's still more spaces than there are seats, all right.
Yeah, and the, the code is seats in the largest gathering space.
Kathy made a good point, though. Regardless of the code, just for your own use, you're going to want to look at that, I'm sure, for your, for your own functionality, you know? Placing those permanent parking permits elsewhere to free up those, if, if needed, for your, for your functionality.
Yeah, remember, the whole theory behind this was to take traffic off of South Eithen. And that's why we're storing the student cars there because during event time, there would be less cars parked in that structure and less cars using South Eithen. So again, remember, you know, it's kind of a playoff, one against the other.
But realistically speaking, I'm looking at people coming in from outside of the college community running this. They won't necessarily know where to park on campus, and they therefore may end up in neighborhoods, which are closer than the other side of the campus. So I'm just asking you to keep an open mind that down the road, perhaps you need to move the warehouse cars to another part of the campus and allow the people who are going to be using the theater to park in there.
Yeah, we understand this whole thing is very fluid as to event traffic. And I think that's why we've been working with Ray Mattis and the township, you know, on this whole circulation pattern for event parking.
Alex?
Once again, comment 17 is about the 20-foot buffer width, which we already discussed. So we don't, we don't need to revisit that. Under subdivision land development, one of the only few. Comment two, we're still in discussions with staff on when you convert from a 25-foot roadway to a 22-foot driveline. But I think we've, we've met with them recently, and it's not reflected in the updated submission on Friday. But we've discussed, and I think we know what they're looking for, so we can address that.
What is it that they're looking for? Well, they're looking for 25. The question is, are you going to do 25?
Well, no, that, it's a question of where 25 applies and where 22 applies because there's two different standards in the code. And it's a interpretation of when it's an entry drive and when it's a driveline. So what we're going to do is keep it 25 until you get to the parking spots, and then go to 22.
Is that what is normally done in the township in commercial parking?
Yeah, the code requires 22 for a parking aisle with...
In commercial parking lot?
In any parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
And then everything else in Roger's letter is a will comply. As far as, I'm moving on to Amy's letter. And I think to go back to, I mean, we already kind of talked about the, the parking analysis, and Roger covered it. But there was a plan included in this. It was submitted after the first version was submitted at the request of Roger, but it's been included in this resubmission as well. A phasing plan that shows the incremental parking at every stage. So there was a question of when does the parking demand get generated, et cetera. The housing isn't built till Phase Three, so most of the parking is front-loaded. We have to build all the parking to take all the other parking lots offline. So all the parking exists before the dorms get built. But there's an incremental step at each phase showing how much parking is provided, which was what addressed Roger's concerns for that. So that was included. Well, now, there's a Plan 3.2, I believe it is, in the plan set. That's, or 2.3. Now 2.4 in the, what was that? Yeah, that's, that's the one he was looking at, right. But the beginning of Amy's letter also talks about kind of the incremental phasing, which we agree with.
Alex, can, can I ask if you go over some, like a summary of the stormwater systems before we get to the traffic, or were you planning on doing that later? Or were you planning on doing that later?
Well, yeah, we were going to, it's depending on when you want to talk about the new submission versus the old submission. So we can take a break and talk about the storm water central in Roger's letter and then move to Amy's response, if, if that's the easier way to do it.
Well, it all depends on the graphics that you brought. I don't know what you're, you're planning on using to describe the stormwater systems, but-
Yeah, I mean, we just have copies of the plans that were submitted yet on Friday that we can just show where we've added some stormwater systems. And we have the drainage plans from the stormwater report that we can show what water we're collecting.
All right, well, go to the traffic first then and get back to my, to stormwater.
As far as Amy's letter goes, moving to her, page three, comment five, comment number one, there's a question about the curb radii, which is the internal, the inside curb radius of Ithaca Avenue in this location. This is proposed at a 25-foot radius. The code, since this is an Artira roadway, the code is a 35-foot radius required. We would be seeking a waiver to use the 25-foot radius. Once again, this is a balancing act to get good turning movements in this area while keeping the pedestrian crosswalk distance short enough to not affect that time provision. We've provided turning templates in the new plan that shows any delivery trucks that are accessing the, the loading dock in the housing section can adequately make this right turn with the 25-foot radius. And I know there are concerns about the angle that's there today. We're improving the, though we're not at the 35, we're still improving from what's there today. We believe it's an 18-foot radius there today. And we're also providing a little bit of a wider section at this throat to get a better alignment for this turning movement so that you don't have to slow down as much to make that right turn on your normal day-to-day traffic, which causes a lot of that backup where people that are making right turns have to slow down so much because of that angle. So we've provided a little bit better alignment on this inside corner and a 25-foot radius, whereas today it's like a 17 or an 18-foot radius there. And we believe it adequately provides for the truck movement, improves the speed at which cars need to slow down to to make the right turn and while all maintaining the pedestrian crosswalk, crosswalk length we want.
Did you look to see how much longer the crosswalk would be with a 35 radius?
I did. I don't remember the number off the top of my head. It's a, it's a couple of feet, but at the crossing time, it can add a couple of seconds, which amazingly is noticeable. So the goal was to maintain the same crossing width.
Alex?
Yeah?
So your reasoning for not doing 35 was because you were concerned about the pedestrian timing?
Yeah, it would increase our crosswalk length.
Well, if you pull back that crosswalk and move it more towards the west, you could actually run it more perpendicular to the curb and reduce the time, much like you have on departure?
Yeah. But what it keeps doing, and we can discuss it, you know, that keeps pushing the stop bar back and it's already such a large intersection between-
That's fine. The stop bar's not of any consequence. That's, that's not anything that's concerning.
Okay, we can discuss it.
Okay.
Comment two, we believe is an incorrect comment, whereas the nine-and-a-half-by-20 stalls are base code, the CICD permits the nine-by-19. So we believe that comment is not applicable to this. Comment three was the same issue with the 22 and the 25-foot lane width, so we'll address And I think we clarify in room and numeral six, comment one I, she, there's a comment to eliminate the left turns into the Pike Lot. During events plans, we agreed during the event plan that all traffic would be directed through the intersection, making the right turn behind the PAC and into the garage. Therefore, the police can restrict vehicles making a left during events. But what we discussed with staff and the police is that the lane would stay for day-to-day usage. You'd still want the left turns for non-event traffic, so we're going to, we're not willing to eliminate the lane itself. But under the event plan, the police would either barricade this off or park their car there to restrict left turns into the garage and force everybody that's going into the garage to come behind the Performing Arts Center and in. So I think it's something we can clarify with staff. Everything else, moving to her, page five, comment 13 is the discussion on the right turn lane location, which we've already discussed and is, we're still working through with staff and PennDOT, so like we said, that's not a settled issue yet. We believe everything else we've provided to Amy, as far as will comply. The only thing that we also discussed on the last page, her last comment, 16, room and numeral six, there was a request for signage to prohibit right turns out of this property heading south on Ithaca. And that's because of the interconnection between deliveries between this campus and south campus, we can't prohibit truck movement that way. It's a little self-governing by the clearance of the overpass. It's only really small vans and box trucks that do that because of the clearance, but we can't put a sign that restricts any truck movement because there are still small trucks that deliver mail in between the two campuses. So I think we've discussed that with staff and the police and everyone was in agreement that that, that's acceptable. But we had a good meeting with them and we believe everything other than what we discussed is a will comply. And then just to give you an update on some comments in general about providing additional stormwater information, the previous submission was just for Lancaster Avenue housing and there was a request to provide a, the additional design plans and additional stormwater systems for the property. It might be easier to go to the tabletop for this.
And while that's being set up, I just want to make a comment that, that we were, we were just presented, staff was just presented these plans also, and we haven't had time to go through and review anything yet. So Alex is going to make this presentation. You typically look to me for answers for questions that I haven't opened the drawings yet. So I'm not going to be able to answer a lot of the specifics about this. And Alex will take you through at the 10,000-foot level here to explain that. And we will certainly be looking at this in, in much more detail and dealing with Alex over the next couple of weeks with comments.
I mean, I guess I'd like to not get too deep into the weeds on this one since staff has not reviewed it. So if there's some gross, major, big-picture items, that's fine to point out.
Yeah, we're just going to talk about kind of what we're doing with stormwater, what we're capturing.
Exactly.
Keep it that simple, yeah. And really, the housing was already submitted and there were some comments, I think we've already kind of addressed or at least been working with Roger on those issues. What wasn't addressed was the east side of Ithaca Avenue with the Performing Arts Center and the garage. So just generally what, from a high level, the site's split kind of where the, where the marker is now, where the west half of the property drains towards Ithaca Avenue and then the east half, the ball fields in the back half of the parking lot drains to the rear corner where the ball field is. And if you remember, a few years ago, when the press box was done, they built a stormwater system here that actually was fully compliant with the code and actually went above and beyond the code as part of that process. They agreed to pick up the ball, or the parking lot, which was outside of the scope of that improvement and, and overdesigned this system to account for that. So the general approach is the garage is split, 60% of it uses this system and 40% of it uses a new system that's going to be installed onto the fire lane for peak rate control and volume management. This system provides peak rate control and volume management as well. There's some improvements we're proposing to this system. We believe we can make it function a little bit better with increasing its ability to infiltrate a little bit more water and adding a mechanical filter to help the life of it and the maintenance needs of it. So with that, we believe it'll help get a little bit more water into the ground from what, how it's currently functioning today. I know the big issue that came up, well, not the big issue, but one comment that was raised during the, the Butler Annex Plans was there was a comment brought up about the, there's an existing PennDOT pipe that cuts across Pike Field in this location here. Current, or previously, or in the existing condition, all the PennDOT roadway from Ithaca Avenue intersection to Black Fire, Black Fire Lane drains to a low point right here. And then that gets piped through Villanova's property and discharges at the railroad uncontrolled and then flows down through the neighborhoods. There was a request to see what we could do to pick up that PennDOT drainage and provide some additional above and beyond stormwater control. So what we're willing to do is basically break that pipe, reroute it, kick it into a large stormwater system, which would control even a portion of some of the north side of Route 30, control PennDOT roadway from Black Fire to Ithaca Avenue, everything that drains to this low point. And then it also provides some control for our new right turn lane and some of the widening here. And we'll provide additional peak rate control in the watershed that drains back through the neighborhoods where the existing Pike Field, this is just north of the existing Pike Field system. So now you'll have two stormwater systems, one controlling the lower half of the property, one controlling the roadway, some of the Performing Arts Center and even some of the north side of the road that's not controlled today. So we think that's a great improvement that, that we submitted to Roger for his review.
Will that incorporate any water quality measures?
Once again, we're doing the same thing with a, with a filter for maintenance needs for that, especially with the picking up roadway runoff. And it's anticipated to be an infiltration system. We've just added this, so we still have some research to do on the soils. But it's designed to have infiltration and peak rate control as well.
Do you know, just off the top of your head, if, if it will contribute any more volume to the neighborhoods back there than we're already seeing?
It should reduce volume because it's going to pick up water that's uncontrolled today and control it.
So you think that even when you do certain, certain amounts that you're kind of withholding as you get the bigger storms, will, will there ever be the opportunity that you do end up releasing all of that back there because you've got the 100-year storm or something like that, that you end up being able to release a certain percentage of that? Will it ever get to a point where, at any of those storm events, that we could see more water back there than we typically do?
No, it would be, it would be, well, no, it's picking up and infiltrating water that's uncontrolled today. So it provides, the water quality storm and the volume management storm is the one-inch storm. So when you get to the 100-year storms, they're just peak rate control basins. But it would meter the flow out of that system much greater than it is today. And then the Performing Arts Center similarly has, I can flip to those plans, but in front of the Performing Arts Center, there's a front courtyard, which I'll show, that provides a stormwater system in the front of there for the control of the Performing Arts Center when that gets built. So high level, that's what it is for Pike Field. There's four systems now, whereas today there's only one. And then similarly in West Lancaster Avenue, that all drains to the west of Church Walk. And underneath the parking lots, there's similar, similar systems to what we just showed underneath the parking lot, that will provide both infiltration and detention control to the code standards there as well. But I think the biggest thing we wanted to highlight was the agreement to, to capture the PennDOT runoff and help, help with that uncontrolled nature.
So what's PennDOT going to give you in return for taking their flow? Can you get them involved in this? Get them to give this, give you something in return?
And then the only other thing that I think was, was brought up in some of the previous comment letters that we submitted on Friday was additional circulation plans and pedestrian route plans. We can go over that if, if you guys have questions on that or if you'd like to see a presentation on any of the specifics on where students are going to walk during construction phases, how events are going to be managed.
I would recommend that that's better left until we all have a chance to review and comment on that.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. I think that's most of our summary stuff and we're, anything else, we'll, hopefully have any questions?
Great. Any questions of the board or staff? Let's go board first, then staff. Go ahead.
I was going to suggest that maybe we consider public comment at this point because that may bring up issues that the public is concerned about that-
Yeah, thanks, Skip.
Doug first.
Are these buildings the same height as they were originally? They're, they're four stories tall, is that right? Were they originally taller than that or am I misremembering?
Originally, originally, we had a variety of heights, some, some five-story sections, some three-story sections. We even had one that was two-story. We've now made them all pretty much four stories, some with sloped roof, some with parapet.
But there's, there's still the same total number of people or approximately the same total number of square feet?
Yes, kind of evened out and took out the highs and the lows.
I just want to make sure my memory was right. Thank you.
And with that, if there's anyone in the audience, public comment, we'd like to hear what you have to say.
Tish Long, Aldwin Lane. I just have a few comments that I'd like to make. First of all, I think the buffering is outstanding. I think the plant material is lovely. That being said, I am disappointed that the Aldwin Triangle is not being considered for total restoration. I believe that it is in dreadful repair currently and I think that the area closest to South Ithaca certainly needs to be reforested. And we are hoping that perhaps a meadow might be installed at this site. We think it would be really welcome and certainly appropriate, appropriate for the site. And we would hope that Villanova would have the budgeting allocated to do this. We're very pleased that they are going to preserve the entire triangle, but we feel that it really needs to be looked at and, and addressed.
Excuse me, one question. Has that, have you attended any of the meetings with Villanova?
I have. I've, I've attended many meetings and it was my understanding, we had a buffer meeting with Chris Kowalski and Bob Morrow in August, that there was going to be no funding available for the triangle. And I happened to meet with the DEP with Maya Van Rossum yesterday where the West Wayne Park project was discussed. And that's a very similar parcel size. And to accomplish the goals there, which I think would be very similar to the Aldwin Triangle, was around a million dollars, which I don't really think is too much to ask for with all the sacrifice that we, the neighbors, are making. Which leads me to another point that I'd like to make this evening, and that is, we would really, really like to put on the table the possibility that the St. Augustine Center Garage be used for warehousing some of the student cars. We think that it's a great opportunity and I gather that a variance might be required, which certainly the residents would be happy to support. And where it's situated on the campus, it's a natural location, we believe, to house a lot of the cars. And that would alleviate some of the parking issues in the garage. Kathy made some great points in terms of possibly other parking being needed for the art center. So I think that that is an opportunity and I would certainly welcome the planning commission putting that on the table this evening as something to look, look, look toward. Another question I have for Villanova, actually, is with the width that they're not complying to along the R100 of the 20 feet, what is that current dimension that we are left with? Do you know, Roger, or does anyone know? How is that being minimized?
I would defer to the applicant for that dimension.
Well, we would like to know what that dimension is.
I don't have the exact dimension, but I should clarify, we, we're not not complying, it's not required to be 20 feet. But we believe in, in the areas towards the west side in this location here-
Right.
It's about 10 to 12.
Right. And I really don't mean to quibble, but in reading Roger's memo, I, I took it to mean that the applicant was not in compliance, so I think that should be addressed as well. The last point that I'd like to make is the, all the fencing that is going to be happening along Lancaster. And certainly, we, the residents, living in all the adjacent neighborhoods, appreciate the safety elements. But I always think there are two sides of the coin. And the other side is the safety of the pedestrians in such a concentrated, dense area. And I don't know if anyone happened to see the car that was coming out of a car wash in Ardmore and went over the curb and landed on top of another car. And I think it gives us great pause in terms of the safety element for the students, that there is no, no access for them to flee a situation. God forbid there was, you know, a shooter situation or something, you know, untoward that would be happening in this area. that would be happening in this area. How indeed would that be managed by our police and our...
Just to comment on that, Kevin said at the last meeting that they had just had a meeting for emergency evacuations and things like that. So I don't know where that stands.
And Skip, I appreciate that, but I'm just suggesting to you all that if you have hundreds of students there and the gates are not released, I mean, it is not going to be a good situation. I mean, where are they actually going to be going to flee that area? So I just think more attention and concern needs to be given to the safety of everyone. And it's, again, to Elizabeth's point, because I also walk the campus, and I come down there, and I appreciate your comments this evening regarding that. But it is very hard to navigate, and when you walk along there, it's really quite scary at times with cars so close, and I just think that safety is, should be paramount as we move through this process. Thank you very much.
If I may add to that, one of the items that was submitted by Villanova that's in your packets that we haven't had a chance to review was an evacuation plan. And certainly, the police and Kevin's department and myself will look through that as part of our overall review.
Roger, just to clarify, you're saying that it's in this?
That's correct.
Okay. Because I got the impression that there are like three things here, but, okay, that some of the Friday...
Three, three things.
Some of the Friday material might not be in this packet?
I believe it's all in there.
Okay.
It should be.
Great.
Everything that was submitted by them on, I believe it was Friday or Monday morning, that we were given yesterday, I believe you got a copy of everything also.
Anyone else from the public?
Phil R., Rosemont, Meredith Avenue. First of all, thank you for your attention and for the staff for the thoroughness of their review of the plans so far. I know there's more that you have left to do, and appreciate your comments and the depth of them in making sure this thing happens. I'd just like to ask that, you know, these conditions that were asked for, and in some cases you may even say fought for, were very detailed and very specific. They were there to protect the residents, to protect the township and safety, and also the students, and to make sure things went smoothly as we moved into this next phase of the project. So we ask that, I know the staff will do a super job in terms of analyzing the new plans and making sure they comply, but we ask that as it comes to you for the final approval, that you leave no stone unturned, that you don't leave any details left, because you know when it gets to the Board of Commissioners stage, some details may get missed. So that's, we hope that it doesn't pass your muster until it does 100%. Also, in terms of the, of the right turn lane, I know that's still to be discussed with PennDOT and staff, and between them and Villanova. I found Amy Kaminski's comment particularly interesting tonight about how the signal timing at that one spot could be changed just by changing the angle of the crosswalk. I'd never seen that before, I know a few folks had considered it, but it sounds like it's an interesting twist. That's a very odd curve. It causes a lot of problems if you hear the traffic folks are talking about it, the neighbors are talking about it in terms of the plan, and it seems like a lot of attention is making sure that there's no change to that curve is made, and yet this is the perfect time to get that curve right. And if all it takes is just to change a little bit of the crosswalk, perhaps that may be the key to unlock it. So thank you for your attention, and thanks very much for your service.
Thank you.
Last meeting, at the planning meeting, I asked who owns the church, and Bob Morrow responded that the monastery belonged to the Augustinian Order, and the church belonged to Villanova University. I also asked about the deed, and I was told I could find the deed at the county courthouse in media. Roger Phillips also stated that the all-appropriate deeds were submitted to the township. So at this point, I had made a call, and I was told to speak to Mr. Kachansky, who very kindly got back to me as I wanted to know how I could get the deed that was submitted. And he said, oh, I just needed to come in and request it, and that's what I did. And I asked, requested for any and all deeds pertaining to the church, meaning St. Thomas of Villanova Parish, and of course, Church Walk. Within these documents, where does it say that the St. Thomas of Villanova Parish, the church, and Church Walk in question on the campus, that it belongs to Villanova University and not the St. Thomas of Villanova Parish? Why also on the document, which we also, we got in our packet, does it say that the date is 1911?
So I'll ask, so Roger, can you at least address the ownership? Or should I have the applicant do that?
I think I would prefer to have Nick take a shot at this first, and then we can...
Because this is, this is complicated, there's several deeds over several years. So could you please clarify as to how?
And actually, as we showed you this evening as to what the county has records of, Villanova, as we all know, acquired most of this property probably around 1842 or so. There were some deeds in and out between the Augustinians and Villanova University during that period of time. I believe the last deed that we have is that 1911 deed, which is the deed that was just referred to. Since that time, and I believe it was approximately 2003, because of the zoning hearing that I found in my file today, that we had done regarding the monastery, because the monastery put an addition on. And as we spoke about this evening, the monastery is about a 1.4 or so acre property that is by itself. All the rest of the land beside the monastery is owned by Villanova University.
And, but you have a deed that says the church is owned by the church and not the parish and not the university? Or...
I...
In the microphone, please.
I requested, because I was told that all the necessary deeds pertaining to Villanova University, what they owned and what was owned by the parish, St. Thomas of Villanova Parish, was in the deed. And this is the deed that I got requested, and there is nothing in there that would suggest to me in 1911 that St. Thomas of Villanova Parish is in this document.
Just so you know, the deed description, just like any deed, it's a deed description that describes meets and bounds. It doesn't refer to the church being part, doesn't refer to Bartley Hall being part, it doesn't refer to Dockerty Hall being part. It's meets and bounds, that's how deeds work, that they're meets and bounds. That 1911 deed includes the church.
So she has, she has the deed. We're all going off, so that's the accurate deed.
This is the deed that I requested and got from the township. I have documentation from my own parish that says in 1883, there was groundbreaking for the construction of the St. Thomas of Villanova Parish. It was ground, the ground was laid in 1883, and it was completed in 1887. So that's why I'm asking, this goes back to 1883, when the ground was broken.
I also have a question. What, what is your point, or what are you trying to get at?
My point is, if Villanova University owns the church...
Right.
Where is the deed?
I have been told that the deed is in your hand. I don't know that that's accurate, because I am not equipped to evaluate the deed to know if it is, but you're going to have to have an attorney look at the deed and, and see if it trues up with what the county says that Villanova owns. Because, I mean, you're not making a claim that your parish owns it, right? You're just questioning if Villanova, in fact, owns it. Because so far, nobody else has claimed ownership but Villanova.
Well, respectfully...
Yes.
I am not the applicant. I feel the burden is on Villanova University to provide the deed for 1883.
They have provided a deed, this is my understanding, if I'm wrong, please holler out, but they've provided a deed, which is the current deed, which says that they own the property. I think it's, falls on you now, and our staff has reviewed it, and they believe that it is accurate. So if you dispute it, I think you have to come in with a little more proof.
I have come in with the proof, and this comes from the St. Thomas of Villanova Parish. This gives the history of the church. The church belongs to the Augustinian Order. The Augustinians bought that church.
But you're making a counterclaim, and you're going to have to come in with counsel or with some other means of proving your claim.
I would like...
And this is probably not the venue to do it either.
I'm still saying, this goes back to 1911, where there are 56.264 acres of land purchased by Villanova University. Nowhere in this document, and if you read it, would it suggest that that land was purchased by Villanova, I mean, other than Villanova University purchasing these 1911 deed, would it suggest that the church is included in that? The church is a separate entity. It is owned by St. Thomas of Villanova, purchased by the Augustinians way back in the 1800s.
Well, if they own it, then why aren't they staking claim to it? Why are they letting Villanova have it?
I don't think they under, they even know or aware of this.
I just don't think this is the venue for this.
Well, what would be the venue?
I think you have to, you have to, whoever owns this, whoever has a claim to own it, then needs to stake that claim and stake the evidence, and obviously Villanova, you have to either go to the county recorder's office, go to a title insurance company. I'm not exactly sure, because I'm not an expert on this, these matters, but if you, whoever has, thinks they have a claim and thinks they have jurisdiction over it, needs to go about trying to enforce their rights.
It's not whether or not they think they have a claim, they, the Augustinian Order owns the church, not Villanova University.
Then that's up to the Augustinian Order to tell the university they own it, and to go through the, whatever legal remedies they have to secure it. This is not the venue.
Well, here's the issue. All that land was included in the CICD.
I understand that.
No. It's not in, it's not in...
We've got, we've got in this now. This is just not the venue, and I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I'm not sure exactly what she was given, what deed, but I have the complete title report with me here tonight.
Okay.
286 pages that Villanova was required to submit, which the title report goes back and, and actually gives proof that they own the ground that they're speaking of, that they're going to do this development on. You can, you can take this book with you if you'd like. I believe, I believe it's online, but to save you the printing trouble, you could take this with you tonight and, and review it further. Maybe your answers that you're looking for are in there somewhere.
Thanks, Roger.
The church is not in the CICD.
Pardon me?
The church is not in the CICD. The CICD is the other side of Lancaster.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. My understanding, I mean, being an engineer and having once actually tried to survey things, that the information that's in, the deeds that are in that book, they could theoretically get a surveyor out there to draw the offside boundaries of every one of those pieces of property, all, most of which belong to Villanova, only one of which, or a couple of small ones which belong to the Augustinians. Is that what you're suggesting that we should do, get surveyors out there to draw the lines?
We're not, we're not going to.
No.
Okay. But that's, that would probably be the only way we'd be able to determine with certainty what piece of property is owned by each of those two entities. I'm, you know, so...
And just one, one more thing if I could add. Typically, the date that's on a deed is typically, if it's, if a new deed is recorded at the time of sale or land transfer, that's typically, a new deed is generated. If you, if you buy your house, your deed has the date on it as to when you bought your house. So the fact that the deed has a newer date than what was done before just means it's the most recent deed for that property.
Why don't you start with the book, and if you are unsatisfied, you're welcome to come back.
Also, I would like to know the number of parking spaces on campus, you know, relegated for a church, and how will they enter the surface parking lot and number, and how, what's the number of handicap parking?
So, so can the applicant, do you have any other?
We have a number, but it's the same as before this development, whether before this development or after this development, it's going to be the same number of spots on the north side of campus with the same number of handicap spots. I don't know if we have those numbers or not, but it's the same as currently exists.
I have a copy of information. Ms. Bailey's asked this information before, and we submitted it as part of the conditional use hearing on September 10, 2014. A lot of these questions were asked and answered, and I have a packet here of information that was forwarded. As a party, Ms. Bailey should have received this, but it outlines, again, what Mr. Canelia said, is that the parking that we have previously is the same parking that's going to be available in future conditions. It outlines permissible places to park on campus adjacent to the church, as well as a designated parking across the street.
Do you have another copy? You could leave with it right now?
I do.
Okay, thanks.
Excuse me. The packet of information also contains a letter from the pastor of St. Thomas of Villanova Church, who outlines his and the parish's support for the project, and...
There are approximately 35 white vans parked on the main lot. Where will those be parked? Will they be permanently housed? Do you know the white vans that were in the back?
Is there a problem with the vans, or?
Well, right now, they're situated on the main lot, where they sit perfectly fine. You know, if we're talking about putting students' cars in the parking garage, having X amount of spaces for those cars, 35 vans is a lot of van. So I'm just asking, where will they be placed?
If you have an answer, that's fine.
The number of parking spots right now will be the same number of parking spots that we have in the future. So we haven't quite figured out where we're putting those vans, but since the number of parking spots won't go down, they'll be accommodated on campus.
Thanks.
Okay. Final question. Where will all the cars park that utilize the present, will the retail that's going to be developed over on the main lot? And will there be a charge? Like, will there be spaces enough where they'll be able to park over on the south side where the new dormitories will be?
Is that provided in the parking plan that you... Okay, that's in the plan they just presented with you? Oh, not that one.
Okay, so everything is in there? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? Okay. And any other additional staff comment at this time?
I do have one comment. I heard earlier that there were some planning proposed along the Pike Field buffer that exists, but not part of the CICD. Obviously, there's still a lot of loose ends to clean up as part of these plans. I would request that a note be placed on the plan indicating that supplemental buffering will be added. If it's on the plan, it's part of the plan approval, and it's something that then we can go back to make sure is something that's being done as part of the process for this development.
Okay, if the applicant would please do that, and obviously, staff be mindful to expect it.
And I would ask that, when you get ready to make a recommendation, that that is included in your recommendation to the board.
Thanks.
I had one question that came up from the first public comment about doing something to restore or enhance Aldwin Triangle. There's two, two pieces to this application. One is the fee and lieu or dedication of new parkland, and the other is the dedication of, for permanent preservation ground because it's under the CICD trade-offs. So is there a way to use some of the left-hand money to take care of the right-hand project, so to speak? There's a fee and lieu coming in, or more parkland, so...
Right, but Skip, that would be rent or township money at that point.
Yeah, but it may be a piece of Aldwin Triangle could be parkland, and then the fee is partially fee and partially parkland, so that the meadow gets built.
Well, I think the way they're proposing it right now, it's dedicated open space, so it's not counting as parkland.
But it...
So that would eliminate the fee.
Yeah, I understand.
If you were to convert to parkland.
No, 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 there's two, there's two parts. Some of the dedication is because it's a CICD development. There's two, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but there's two...
Well, if I can add to that, you can't, you can't overlap the two. There's, there's a certain amount of area that has to... There's, there's a certain amount of area that has to be dedicate, dedicated for them to get the, the density bonus on here under the CICD. You can't double count that land also, again, as parkland. It has to be separate and distinct on its own for the part that's, that's dedicated open space. But that's not dedicated to the township. That remains under Villanova ownership. It's just deed restricted, that nothing can be placed on it.
Well, I'm just saying, in view of how everyone prizes the triangle, there, we could stop at just preserving it, but maybe would the applicant consider giving some of it to the, you know, the township as parkland? Is there a reason that they have to continue to own it?
Can, can they, or don't they have to continue to own it?
If they want to give the township land and the township chooses to accept it, they're free to do that.
So, they won't violate any-
It's not an requirement under the CICD.
Okay.
What they have agreed to as part of their conditional use is preserving that entire Aldwin Triangle. So, it, it has gone over and above what is required for them to get that bonus. So, they, they've agreed to, and they indicate on the plans, that they're going to dedicate, they're going to, to preserve the entire Aldwin Triangle, other than if there's a small area that may need to be used by SEPTA to, to increase the access to their train station. Other than that, they've agreed to preserve that.
Well, when you say preserve, right now, it's not parkland. They're going to preserve it in its current state, more or less.
Well, it's preserved to have no improvements. So, not, you know, they could, they could spruce it up a little bit, but it's preserved to where there's no, no structures or anything would be can build on there.
Let me just spin a hypothetical. It's July 1st, 2015. They sign a conservation easement. They're preserving the triangle. They issue you a check because they don't want to give another three or four acres somewhere else on campus to the township. They issue a fee and lieu simultaneously or the day after. September 1st, they walk in and say, "We'd like to give you one acre of Aldwin Triangle or an acre and a half or whatever, and will you accept it as parkland?" And now, on September 18th, the township says, "You know, we did get $500,000 or $250,000. Let's build the meadow." Is that possible?
Utilizing the fee that we received to improve lands that the township has.
That would have been given to the township.
Correct. Ultimately, any allocation of those fees would be subject to review from the Parking Rec Board, make sure that we're making the most judicious use of that funds to benefit the community as a whole. So, that would be something, you know, any use of those, whether it's the fees from Villanova or any of the other developments that the fee and lieu that's being provided for, would be subject to review and recommendation from, I guess, from this board, as well as the Parking Rec Board.
So, we, if everybody was in agreement, and that includes the applicant, we could do this?
If, yes. I, if there was a scenario where the township acquired some of that land, yes. I don't see the township spending township money on lands that aren't owned by the township.
And since it's permanently restricted by Villanova, Villanova's never going to build on it anyway. So, I'm just putting the blocks together here, that's all.
I'll be brief. I just think that it falls in the definition, definition of what the word preservation means. And right now, yes, they have donated the triangle, which we're very appreciative of. But right now, if you come to the triangle, which I'm happy to walk with any of you, it's in such dire need. All the, the trees are falling down. They're, it's in, it's in great disrepute, actually. And so, the point is, yes, they've preserved it, but to what end? And that's my point. I mean, I think it's, it could be a very viable, vibrant area that not only the university could appreciate and enjoy, but certainly the surrounding neighborhoods as well. And I think it could also be a learning tool.
Yeah. Your points, we'll take, and I think we'll, we'll address that with Villanova. But one thing, I just want to be clear. So, your, your interpret, your definition and your meaning of preservation and errors in this instance are different. So, your, your preservation is to take something and restore it and have it work. Our definition here is that they're not going to build on it. So, they're, they're preserving it as-
Right.
-non-building.
No, and I, and Steve, I totally understand that, but I would just like to also add that in preserving something, you don't sort of want it to just rot away, if you follow my-
You know, no, I, I totally get your point.
Terrific, thank you.
So, it's just, we're just a million dollars apart, so.
Great, thank you.
I, I think one of the issues is, is that the township can't spend money on just deed-restricted property that belongs to someone else, unless there's a clear and present danger or something like that, and then they bill them back.
There, again, my last point, and I promise this, my last point that I make to Chris all the time, is I hope that Villanova will see this as an opportunity. We, the neighbors, are making many sacrifices, and we're happy that they're doing what they're doing, but we truly believe that the sacrifice should be shared, and this certainly would be a wonderful way for Villanova to give back to the neighbors and to themselves. It could be a win-win. So, that's what we're hoping for.
Thank you. Any other additional board comment? So, I mean, I, I, I think that, at least from my viewpoint, that we need to obviously table this, because I think we're, there's a lot of items. You, obviously, you submitted a new plan. We need to go through that. There's a lot of items you're still negotiating or working through, those will comply items. So, well, there's a whole new plan here. We haven't, staff hasn't reviewed, so we can't approve a thing. I mean, it's, at least, we just got it. So, but go ahead, Nick.
No, I'm not going to stand up here and ask you to approve something. So, I, I guess the question is, next meeting, you know, you're probably going to be getting another plan back from Biomed soon. I was wondering if it's possible to have another special meeting like we did this evening on this item, perhaps before the next Planning Commission meeting, which I think is April the 6th.
So, Sue, what do we have? We've got Villanova again in April, correct?
Yeah, I, I just, actually, I think that's a good idea to do. Let me just talk with our consultants, make sure everybody can get their review letters completed by a certain date, and we can email the Planning Commission and the applicant, if the Planning Commission wishes to do so. But I, I think that would be prudent, looking at the size of this project, that you're able, the night like tonight, where you're able to spend all your time on it, and it's not 11 o'clock and everybody's thought process isn't deteriorating.
But what are we doing in April with Villanova? So, we're not, we're doing this and something else? Because we're doing the phase-in plan?
Right. You'll be doing the new submission-
Correct.
-that they got. So, you'll be looking at that and, and all our consultants' review letters, and also these loose ends that were brought forth and, and we're still working on.
So, do we want to just, if Biomed comes in, make them? Go ahead.
There might be three other medium to minor things, too. Are there any, is there anything on the horizon, like one-
There's no other, nothing other than this for April so far.
Unless Biomed comes back.
And, Sue, we're past the deadline.
We're closed.
Yeah. We're past the deadline for the April meeting, so it's only Villanova.
I think Biomed may just come back and change.
No, no, but they're, yeah, but they're-
I can't tell you.
Yeah, I understand. So, but the only, the only, so we're clear, we've got just Villanova in April, except for if Biomed comes back, that we have the honor of their request. So, should we, instead of scheduling Villanova and then have nothing in April, should we just, does it make sense to just let Villanova roll? And if Biomed comes back, and it's a long, big submission, that we schedule a special for them? Is that logical?
Biomed can't come back on April 1st, because you guys just said, staff just said that it's closed, right? The first meeting is-
But I believe if it's revised, and I think it's just going to be a minor revision, as was, they're telling me. The staff is familiar with what revisions are going to be.
This is what was discussed at the board meeting last night. So, conceivably, the applicant could be back. My thought was, if you have another special meeting, you provide all your attention to Villanova. If there's a decision at that meeting, wonderful. If not, you don't have to spend as much time in a subsequent meeting on what your recommendation to the board may be.
We had another continued item from this month's meeting. What's happening with that one? I forget, was it Bloomingdale?
You're going to have a zoning issue on-
Yes, there's a zoning hearing board application that will be coming in front of you, April, May, as soon as we get the application in.
Who's that from?
Sbersham Builders.
Oh, Sbersham.
It was originally on, I think, your January, and they pulled off, and it's been continued since.
And that is going to, I, I know that we're making that revision to the plan by Tuesday, which would put it on for your hearing for April the 6th.
Okay. Now, how about the Bloomingdale that we continued? I believe it was Bloomingdale.
I think they requested to appear on the board agenda.
Yeah, they're, they're going to be in front of the board of commissioners on the 23rd.
Okay, so they're not coming back to us?
Yeah, yeah.
Conceivably.
All right.
The weird anomaly is, we have Villanova scheduled. Villanova definitely wants to come, and Villanova's going to be at the April meeting. We don't know if Biomed will be ready in time, or do we know for sure?
I can't tell you 100%, but I can tell you pretty clearly that it's-
Highly likely.
Highly, highly likely.
So, if it's a minor revision, are you suggesting that we have two meetings for Villanova or one?
I'm suggesting you have a special meeting for Villanova between now and April, and if it continues into April, I mean, again, you can focus your full time on Villanova at a special meeting like we did tonight. If, if you make a decision and decide to give the board a recommendation, wonderful. If not, there's not so much time that's needed to be spent, conceivably, at, at the regularly-scheduled meeting, knowing that Biomed looms out there.
All right. I, it seems to make sense to me, if it makes sense to staff.
Did you say you wanted it, you wanted it before the April 6th meeting?
Before, and then, if there's any carryover, hopefully, just be a little bit of carryover to April the 6th. And hopefully, we would have to carry it over to April the 6th, but-
The only concern I have is, does that give you guys enough time to submit letters for a review of what you haven't even opened?
Well, like I say, let us work that out, and we'll throw some, if you, if the board wishes, we'll talk to the consultants when they can get it done, and we'll work offline on a date and go back and forth and pick something that works, and that this room is available.
Right.
There's a lot of balls in the air at this point.
How about public notification, though? What, how much time's required for that?
We, we would make sure that everything conformed as far as what's required.
Everything would fall into place.
Also, if you could make sure that the applicant gets your comments in enough time that they can address everything, or there's an active dialogue, so when we get here again, all the items are resolved, with the exception of the ones that they want variance on or waiver on or whatever. That's up to them to do the scheduling, right?
Because we're already at the 10th, and so it's less than a month away that we're expecting our consultants to review this, get the letter to us so we can digest it, get the letter to them so they can digest it, so we can all come back here. And in the meanwhile, there's traffic issues still out there. So, I think it's ambitious to think that we are going to be able to have a productive meeting prior.
It may be, but they'll let us know, right?
I would prefer to keep it on the regular schedule and, and schedule one right after our meetings. I mean, if it's neither here nor there, like, give it another week. Does it make a difference whether or not it's-
Hopefully, that week before April the 6th, that's what, you know, I'm thinking, which may give the staff enough time-
Easter week.
-to review, because remember, oh, is that, when's Easter?
No, I think Easter, Easter is the 6th.
Would it impact the residents? 30th is the beginning of our spring break, so it's the following weekend that Easter is. Yeah, so, I mean, I'd almost rather just push it to just after our April meeting, if it doesn't make a difference. I don't know if it makes a difference in getting it onto the board of commissioners.
Yeah, that's, that's the concern that I have, is would it make a difference on getting it before the board of commissioners? Remember, commissioners would meet 13th, if, if the meeting on the 6th, so I don't know.
But I guess Regina-
So, as long as it's on their agenda, it really doesn't matter? Because it'll be on our meeting, our April meeting, and if we can't work it all out, then we have a backup date to continue it.
A couple of days, maybe, before, you know, I, I just-
I don't know, I don't know how that works.
I kind of agree with Steve, that may be better, if the staff can do the review after discussion, after discussing with staff, that if it can be a little bit-
Whether or not it's realistic.
Why don't you let us work that out, and we'll email the board and the applicant, and maybe it's feasible, maybe it's not.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a yes or no. Either it is or it isn't, so.
Because a lot of, I think a lot of people are out of town that, that last couple days of March and the first week in April.
That's Chris's school, right?
Yeah.
So, maybe we want to avoid that.
That's what I'm saying, that if it's that week, then, I mean, public participation-wise, you know, I don't know. At this point, I think everybody's had their chance to bring up comments, so.
That's a good point. Yes, I'd like a motion.
Before we end, there's one thing I'd like to say. The intersection is what's bothering me. You know, I'd really like to see that right turn lane and the proper radius there, if, if feasible. But the other thing is, we're planning commission, and I feel like all we ever do is help enforce the code. And I would really have preferred to see on this project something for those new residents as far as recreational, like a path or a jogging path, something. And I know, I feel like we're just locking them all in to that bridge and trapping them all behind a fence, rather than, you know, providing, it just has that feeling, and it's because of the process we went through, conditional use, they have to meet these requirements. I would rather the requirements of the conditional use to bend, to put in a jogging trail, than to fence that whole thing. So, I don't know if there's any give or take that can happen at this point.
The, there's two things. One is, within the plan, we do include a new fitness center. I know that's inside, not outside, but there is that accommodation made for that population of students. Also, the whole campus acts as a jogging trail. We actually have a marked jogging trail on campus. This would certainly be added to that. So, while you may not see a designated or dedicated trail, the campus acts as a de facto one. It's often used by our residents in addition to our students. So, that, that does exist, and it's-
And fencing that side and cutting off that small little path in there, does that impact any of the flow? You know, there's that, just that little branch off of the sidewalk that I'm talking about on the north side, west of the church. That'll be fenced, closed, in the proposed condition.
I actually think it'll, it'll improve the flow for, for runners and joggers, because they can go unimpeded over the, the bridge, over to main campus, back and forth.
Well, I'm talking about that, that fencing that's going to extend towards the west side, on the, on the north side of-
Right here.
Lancaster Avenue.
Right here.
Oh, sorry.
It's on the table. You have a pointer?
Just a pointer.
Oh, yeah, we're not using the computer. So, yeah, as you head west-
So, that only eliminates that-
Yeah, closing that up. Like, just, just can you look and make sure that that doesn't impact your, you said you did have some pedestrian mobility studies in here, or is that incorrect? I, I just, I just-
We really are at a conflict. I mean, on one hand-
I, I know your hands are kind of tied. I just want to-
It's not, it's not about the conditional use aspect. I mean, we want to, our, our, we will comply with the conditions that are posed upon us, and we agreed to as part of this process, but safety is an incredible concern for us as well. And so, we have to balance what works for the site, as well as how this whole area is used. And we're taking away this one walkway here, and I would argue that it's used more for people walking, I know I use it, walking across the street to these offices, than it is to access any of this area for joggers. And so, I think by actually-
That's, your, your knowledge is helpful there, because I, I really am not intimately familiar.
And it's just not, it's not a safe crossing, and you aren't inspired to cross there.
I'm not looking for pedestrians to go across there. I just feel like I want to make sure everyone's looked at the impacts of fencing across that side and how that bridge kind of, you know, once you're coming over the bridge, then you're going all the way up to the church. You can't branch out and then go into anywhere else. There's no other connections. other connections. So it, just kind of like the way everything's kind of channelized instead of free-flowing.
Yeah, it's, it's a delicate balance, and, and it's tough to accommodate all of those things. And I think with safety as the biggest concern, we want to make sure that we're preventing the, any chance of jaywalking. There is, and I don't, I don't mean to belabor this, but there is an entry to campus right down near that is heavily used, and there's the entrance up here on the north side of Lancaster. So, you know, if you're jogging along that stretch, you have an opportunity to run inside of campus and come back out and meet up with whatever sidewalking is already there. And it will be continuous on the south side as well. It'll run along the street and then interior to the new residence halls. So...
Where can you first come out? Not until 320? Sproul Road?
On which side? North or south?
On the north side. So is there another connection prior to there?
Right here, right at Campus Corner Pizza.
Okay, that's the first place you'll be able to come out?
Correct.
Okay.
And that currently exists already. That's a walkway that exists already there. And so then it links to all the walkways and paths, and you can come all the way back here at.
And that's at a pretty decent grade there. It's not a steep...
It's very sloping, and it gets to be relatively flat once you reach this main part of campus.
Okay, so where, where it becomes flatter?
Right around here. Right at the church is where it becomes flat. This area is a little bit steep.
Yeah. I mean, people aren't, people aren't going in that way anyway, because it's, it's landscaped and it's a hill.
Right. So I'm just saying, those accommodations have been carefully thought about, and we just, we try to balance, you know, we don't have a fence around the whole university. It's still an open campus. People walk.
Right. I don't, I don't want it to feel like it's a prison.
No, but we also want to make sure that, and we believe this is the best site for that bridge. We want to make sure we give as much reason to use the bridge as possible. And the best example I have to illustrate a bridge that doesn't work as designed is St. Joe's. If you travel down that stretch of Route 1, there are signs that say no jaywalking all along, and there are open driveways along that stretch. And so you, you just know that that's an issue for them, and they've not fenced that, they've not made it so that you have to use that bridge as a crossing. So, you know, it, it's a delicate balance, and I think the way we have it here has really accommodated the safety needs of the pedestrians.
One other point. I asked this question last time we came here. The fence that's on the south side of that, the commissioners requested that, is that not correct? I mean, I'm the one who said it looked like a prison, and it shouldn't be there, but then...
That's what I kind of wanted to get into, too. Remember, when this all started, the big deal was, let's get the students across the street, and let's get them across on the pedestrian bridge. And much of this fencing, in addition to the safety reason, was as a result of getting the students to use the bridge. And, you know, that's where most of this came from initially, and it was a big point, a major point in this whole development from the very beginning.
And I think, actually, the, the look and feel of that whole area is going to be improved. Right now, if you drive by, it's just the fence, the sidewalk, and the street. The hedges are gone. We were asked to remove those. So it looks very institutionalized. Now, what we're able to do here with the kind of buffering, moving the sidewalk in significantly is you create more of a promenade, more than the kind of sidewalk aspect that there is right now. Yeah.
If there's any other additional comments? If not, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we table this, subject to potential of having an additional meeting prior to the next Planning Commission meeting, if it works out properly. Otherwise, this will be on the, the April 6th Planning Commission meeting. Is that fair enough?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to throw a comment out to staff, though. I think once you get into it, that week before Easter should be avoided.
I just saw an email on that, yes.
And any, before we adjourn, any old business? Any new business? Well, we adjourn. Thank you very much, everyone.